This time I'll call the June 20th, 2022 council meeting to order. I welcome you all here tonight. At this time, I'll recognize the Honorable Brandon Guffey, who will lead us in invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Dear Lord, pray that you will be with us tonight as we go through and make decisions for the people. Pray that you will guide our hand and make the wisest decisions for the community. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, if the following individuals would come forward to be sworn into office, as I call your names, if you'll make your way forward. Lori Helms, Rock Hill, York County Convention and Visitors Bureau, District 4; Michelle Eyre, Rock Hill, York County Airport Commission; Gary Morris, Leslie Fire Tax District Board; Bobby Willis, Leslie Fire Tax District Board; and Jane Wazaluski, York County Council on Aging. And I hope I pronounced the names right. If I didn't, I apologize. But our county attorney is going to come up in just a minute and swear you in. On behalf of the council, we want to say thank you for the work that you do. It's volunteer and oftentimes without any thanks at all. And so, we do want to say how much we appreciate what you do because without you, the council, the county just couldn't run and the work of the people couldn't get done. So, we want to thank you for that. It's my understanding that Sheriff Tolson has requested to move his appearance till the next council meeting. So, we move straight into Keep York County Beautiful to present their annual report.
Good evening. How are y'all doing this evening? We've got slides here and some notes. And I will admit, I'm reading it because I can't memorize anything. And this is my clicker. Keep York County Beautiful is an all-volunteer board. Our vision is for a well-educated, empowered community committed to beautifying York County through a diverse range of litter prevention, recycling, and environmental solutions. On behalf of Keep York County Beautiful, we appreciate this opportunity to celebrate our 12th anniversary and would like to thank York County Council, York County Management, York County Public Works, Eric Rickett, Director, and Ryan Blank, Assistant Director, York County Solid Waste Collection and Recycling Administrative Staff. At present, we have eight of our 14 board seats filled. Keep York County Beautiful is not funded through the county budget. Our operating budget is founded through grants from outside entities. Last fiscal year, we secured $15,000. In addition, the board volunteers worked 569 hours valued at over $17,000. Grants KYCB has earned to date are in excess of $179,500. In the previous year, we had won several awards. The Keep America Beautiful President's Circle Recognition Award, the Keep South Carolina Beautiful Affiliate Recognition Award, and the Keep South Carolina Beautiful Outstanding Performance Event Award with Rock Hill Clean &amp; Green. Keep York County Beautiful also conducts the Keep America Beautiful Litter Index annually. We just finished up on this last week. This is used to visually assess the amount of litter that's present in the community. The scale goes from one to four, with one being minimal to no litter and four being extremely littered. Every five years, there's a whole fresh set of roads that get assessed and examined. The 2022 overall score was 1.36, which means it looked good. Okay. Keep York County Board is not just a planning board, but also a hands-on working board who honestly love where they live. We love where we live. York County residents are also encouraged to volunteer with us. KYCB project-focused areas are waste reduction, recycling, litter prevention and beautification, and outreach and education. We have committees. The Waste Reduction and Recycling Committee promotes recycling and waste reduction by promoting the new Recycle Right York County mobile app and on-the-go event recycling container loan program. And if y'all have not downloaded the app, you should do so. It'll tell you when the centers are open and there's other information there. So, the committee's reached out to over 90 multifamily housing locations to encourage residents to recycle at the county collection and recycling centers by offering bins and tote bags. And Earth Day Birthday, which you may have attended, the 2022 event was held at the Material Recovery Facility and was attended by 700 people. And we've got some pictures for y'all at the end of the presentation. The litter prevention and beautification projects and programs, such as the Polar Bear Pickup Partnership with Rock Hill Clean &amp; Green, participants receive free cleanup supplies. And each group could choose five reusable travel mugs or five long-sleeved t-shirts. We have one day left in York County Spring Litter Cleanup Program. It runs from March 21st to June 21st. And KYCB has offered free cleanup supplies and five short-sleeved t-shirts to these groups. In addition to our seasonal programs, there are 11 volunteer litter commitment programs for individuals, groups, churches, and businesses, such as Adopt a County Road, Litter Challenge, and Adopt Your Spot It's Your Business. KYCB also has mini-grants. And we received grant funding for this to assist community organizations to fund projects that promote beautification projects in areas such as right-ofways, medians, building exteriors, parks, and other natural areas to improve the York County environment. Councilman Roddy, I believe you're a supporter of Victory Gardens, who received a $750 mini-grant in the 2021 cycle. And then Dr. T., everyone's favorite. Dr. T., less litter presentations are typically held assembly-style. This year, we're offered via YouTube with the format of a movie and a quiz. KYCB also provided $3, $500 scholarships for York County students. The board helped with outreach by volunteering through the Environmental Education Liaison Program and the Household Hazardous Materials and Document Shredding Events. Have you followed us on social media? There's some examples of our posts that we place on social media to help educate folks in the county in an effort to provide outreach and understanding about the sources of litter. The board helps collection and recycling with TARP distributions. Unsecured loads are against the law, can be dangerous, and are the greatest source of litter in the county around our collection centers. And if you haven't already, please follow us on social media. You'll find us on Instagram, on Twitter, and on Facebook. And we are a very busy board, so there's always something new. So, just to kind of wrap things up, we would love for businesses, residents, organizations, and schools to support our mission. And we so appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you so much for everything that you do. I mean, I know that our council will get complaints on litter. And we appreciate the efforts that you do to get the word out on what you do to report it and what efforts we can do as a council to better make sure that it's clean because it not only affects our quality of life, it affects the types of businesses that locate here. And we do appreciate all that you do. Thank you very much. We move now to the public forum session. This is an opportunity for individuals who are in the public to come and speak to the council about any item that they wish to have us hear about. And it's not an opportunity for us to engage or to answer questions, but it is simply an opportunity for us to hear from you. A couple of people have signed up tonight. When you come forward, if you would please give your name and state your address. And please remember that we have a two-minute mark that I hate cutting people off. But when it starts blinking up on the top, that means your time has expired. Jennifer Hutchinson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jennifer Hutchinson. My address is 1360 Pampas Circle, Rock Hill, South Carolina, 29732. However, tonight, I am here on behalf of the Rock Hill Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. I would just like to introduce ourselves to you all. We are members of the York County community, our chapter. We are an organization of over 330,000 women all over the world. And we do a lot of programs within York County, including feeding the homeless and needy through the Dorothy Day Soup Kitchen. We provide over $13,000 annually in scholarships to high school students all over York County. And we also hold voter registration drives. And we also host educational forums that deal with the issues of redistricting, health awareness, and financial literacy. Our chapter was founded and chartered on March 1st, 1958, and has served York County for over 60 years. And although our name is Rock Hill, we actually live in all parts of the county, including Tega Cay, Fort Mill, and Clover. Just to wanted to take an opportunity to highlight some of the issues that we hope that you will make a priority during your legislative sessions. Some of the things on our radar, voter rights. In the past couple of years, South Carolina has recently enacted new voting restrictions. We hope that you understand the importance of educating the community on these new laws so that citizens who are most impacted, including the elderly and minorities, are not discouraged from voting. Homelessness. York County has experienced an unprecedented population growth within the last decade, which has benefited many in various ways. However, growth has come with its challenges. And we are also experiencing a lack of affordable housing and rousing numbers of homelessness people in our community. Our hope is that you will consider ways to combat this throughout the county, considering such options as tiny housing and affordable apartment communities. Education, unfortunately, is common knowledge that South Carolina's rural schools have not received adequate resources to educate our students. As this county has a mix of rural communities within the county, it is our hope that you are diligently working on solutions to this problem and helping every child in this county to get more than just a minimally adequate education. And lastly, healthcare. In South Carolina, African-American babies are twice as likely to die by their first birthday as compared to children of other races. African-American women are more likely to die of breast cancer and cervical cancer than women of other races. We hope that you are doing everything you can to support affordable healthcare for all of your citizens, including those who live in places where hospitals are not easily accessible.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Dr. Norma Gray. It's not a public hearing item. So, if you want to speak, you probably, okay.
Madam Chair, members of council, I'm here to speak on behalf of asking to have council consider Juneteenth as a floating holiday for county employees. Juneteenth, known as Jubilee Day, Emancipation Day, and Freedom Day, is a national holiday. It became a national holiday known as Juneteenth National, a Juneteenth National by the Independence Act, signed by our current president. As I think about Juneteenth and what it means to me personally, it is not just a day off. And while I am here advocating for this floating holiday for county employees, I am more or less advocating for our county to recognize the significance of what giving this day and honoring the moment and memory of Juneteenth as of what it will mean for York County. Juneteenth is the celebration of remembering the notification of the last of the slaves, that they were free. The last to be notified is what the commemoration of Juneteenth is about. What I would admonish county council to do is not be last, but instead be first. The scripture, which I read, says, "But the last shall be first." And so, what I'm asking county council to consider is to lead in this area as we do in many areas of our community. So, in this, I'm asking you to please pass the ordinance to allow county employees to have Juneteenth as it already is a recognized holiday that they do not get to become a floating holiday recognized by our county council. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. We move now to consent agenda. Our policy is to allow, if one council member wishes to have something removed from consent, that is the policy. So, I will say that item number 22 has been requested to be removed, and it will now become number nine in new business. Are there any other requests to remove any items from consent? Do we have an emotion with that amendment?
Move to approve with the removed item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We move now to public hearings. Rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading case number 22-17, tax map number 721-00-00-064, 721-00-00-00-5. A portion to rezone from UD to GC, 1.96 acres in District 1. Mr. Bona.
Meeting council members. The request is to rezone from UD for the parcel to the north, the full amount of the property. And in addition to that, there's a little bit of white hatching on that southern property to rezone 15 feet, that hatched section also to GC. And the reason is because the property would like to develop as a KFC and Taco Bell and drive-throughs are not permitted in the UD district. So, here's what that looks like in context with the existing area on Highway 21. The Ross Distribution Warehouse is on the western side there. So, that's what that site plan would look like. So, you can see from the zoning map that a lot of the area around here is zoned UD currently. And there is some general commercial in the area. So, that would be suitable for that context. As far as the comprehensive plan goes, this does fall in that pinkish color, which is the I-77 corridor employment. Now, the KFC and Taco Bell proposal would not necessarily meet that designation. It's not drawing regional employment. However, there's a second designation that's overlaid on top. So, that red line hatching, that's the commercial infill designation, which is meant to cover commercial areas that are not completely built out in a commercial setting to allow for medium-intensity commercial operations to go in. So, it does meet that designation. So, therefore, staff recommends approval with the condition that the properties be subdivided such that there's only one property that is zoned GC and the remainder of that southern property would remain UD. And then, by a vote of seven to zero, Planning Commission recommends likewise with the same condition.
Thank you, Jonathan. Any questions of staff before we move to public hearing? Thank you, Jonathan. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this request? If so, if you'd come forward. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against?
Move to close.
Second.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just want clarification.
Yeah, absolutely. All yours.
Conditions in there.
Yes.
Move to approve with the.
With conditions, correct. Yeah. First of all, I think it's an opportunity here again to bring some needed restaurants into that area. I think this is a good opportunity here, again, creating some additional jobs in the area. So, I'm excited to see this opportunity come in town.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We move now to old business. Counsel to provide third reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 154 Land Development Code, eliminating the open space requirement in the RUD and RUD-1 zoning districts, extending the applicability of tree-safe sample surveys, limiting parcels created by recombination to a single zoning district, eliminating a development threshold for liability agreements, and clarifying provisions related to utility connections and open space lots. To amend Chapter 155 Zoning Code, reducing certain design standards for manufactured homes in the RSF-30 district, allowing beekeeping as an accessory use to a single-family detached dwelling, reducing the applicability of accessory structure standards in Lake Wiley overlay, modifying the screening standards for vehicle storage and outdoor storage uses, clarifying measurement of setbacks, modifying the definition of data center and distinguishing minimum width on arterial and collector roads to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters relating thereto.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? I will just add that there was a note here from the Planning Commission asking that we revisit an issue with the lots, especially doing a gradation. I think we ought to follow up with them at some point. And at some point, we're going to have a joint meeting. So, I would just ask that we take a look at that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Rezoning action. Consider second reading case number 22-10, tax map number 592-0201-122 and 592-0201-123. To rezone from RSF-40 to OI, 1.72 acres in District 6.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Rezoning action. Consider second reading case number 22-11, tax map number 525-00-00-012. To rezone from AGC to RUD, 14.02 acres in District 5. Requested deferral.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Move now to new business. Item number one. Counsel to consider the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee's recommendation for fiscal year 2023, funding in the total amount of $25,750.
Move to approve management recommendation.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah. Why are we, as far as management versus the accommodation tax? Is it just budget reasons? Is that the primary reason for that, Robert?
It's the same dollar amount either way.
It's just shifting around the way that's allocated.
Yeah. The total amount's the same. And so, you know, personally, I could go either way. The only, and we can amend to do, we've done it in the past where we've made motions to adjust one item or something if you want, if somebody wants to do something different. If there's one particular item, because we've done that in the past.
But what's on here, this is consistent with what we've had in the past.
Yes.
I mean, same.
There's two new items that we've not supported in the past. And those are the two that have nothing under management.
Right, right. Exactly.
Are there any amendments? Or are we prepared to move forward with the vote?
Move forward.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Counsel to approve award for the disposal of municipal solid waste at Republic Services Fort Mill Transfer Station for a total cost of $650,000 for fiscal year 2022 to 2023.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Counsel to approve purchase of asphalt materials for use by Public Works and Engineering Departments to Blythe Brothers Asphalt Company of Charlotte, North Carolina, and Reeves Construction Company of McConnell, South Carolina for fiscal year 2022 to 2023.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I do. I point.
Ms. Ralde.
Yeah. So, in regards to these costs here, are these costs locked in based on a bid quote that we had on here because of the ongoing pricing for any road work? Is this place locked in based on a bid? Or is this?
We had a multi-year award to this provider. And what you're looking at is the amount that we have budgeted for next year for these materials.
Okay.
The price of asphalt, unfortunately, we cannot lock in.
Right.
That's tied to crude oil. But again, this was, as most of these, you're going to come across tonight. These are multi-year awards. And we sort of, we were a little overly generous in pulling stuff out of consent into the new business. But, you know, consistently, we've done the past multi-year contracts. But those prices for the asphalt, unfortunately, we couldn't lock that in for a year.
Mr. Ralde, we're at item 30, new business.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Number four, a new business. Counsel to approve the purchase of veterinary medical supplies for use by the Animal Control Department in the care of animals at York County's Animal Shelter for a total cost not to exceed $300,000 for fiscal year 2022 to 2023.
Move to approve.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah. I just wanted to find out why there was the request per the procurement code to pull out medicine and drugs out of there. Is there a provider locally that they would rather have? Or what is the purpose of that?
No, sir. That's just, those particular items fall under that procurement exemption. And once a year, we go through and we have a lot of these contracts come up. And so, we've tried to pull those out and note the procurement exemption as to why.
Okay.
But no local preference involved.
Okay. Thank you.
So, on these costs, these medical costs, how, is this, what is the timeframe, though, that they expect these supplies? Is this a one-year supply?
Yes, sir. You're budgeting on the amount that we're going to buy from this vendor for next year that we've got budgeted.
Right. But overall, they're expected that, this amount to cover the full year?
Correct. And if during the year, let's say, something happens and the prices go up, that PO would need to be changed, we'd come back to council with that change at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Number five. Counsel to approve on-call veterinarian services for use by the Animal Control Department in the care of animals at York County's Animal Shelter for a total cost not to exceed $105,000 for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Love.
Yeah. I just, I'm just curious about the, I'm not asking for any answers tonight, but I would like to see us move toward being able to have our own vet on-call and not on-call, but have a vet. I just, I feel like we are, from things that I've seen in the past and bills, and I feel like we are probably very overcharged by some of the local. And I know that we have to coordinate and work with them. But I also think that we need to have our own staff in place.
Any comments?
Sounds like a good point.
We did used to have that at one point. And I know that if there's going to be a review of that, that's something that management can do. Seems like you have some comments.
Well, we do have a staff veterinarian. I don't know if that's presently filled, Mike. Is that?
It is presently filled. This is to augment.
Yeah. This would be.
The workload exceeds the veterinarian at times.
Or when they're not available.
When the spay and neuter days are, I would think that's one of the reasons why you would need to on-call.
Correct. This is just for heavy time. And I will add, is filling that vet took a lot of work to get that position filled. And there's a national vet shortage right now. May have encouraged, Mike.
Well, I'm glad we have that filled. I'm glad we have that filled. I do think that Ms. Love makes a good point. And I will say to you that spay and neuter days are probably some of the most, well, they get, it does a very good service for our community, and it saves us a lot of money otherwise. So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Hearing none, motion passes. Item number six, counsel to approve contract renewal payment regarding services by the South Carolina Department of General Justice for a total cost of $40,000 for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Number seven, counsel to approve the assignment and assumption of the purchase and sale agreement from WWP Acquisition LLC and Leonard Carolina's LLC with direction to county attorney to correct the effective date, Second Amendment of the PSA, to conform to the county's execution of this agreement.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Number eight, counsel to rescind award regarding engineering design services in the amount of $33,600 for design of the HVAC replacement and upgrades at the York County Planning Facility.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We move now to consent item number 22. Counsel to provide first reading by title only of an ordinance to amend Chapter 33 of the York County Code of Ordinances, Section 33.069, official holidays. So as to add Veterans Day and an additional optional holiday for qualifying regular employees and to provide for other matters relating thereto.
I'd like to make an amendment to that.
You can make the motion with the amendment?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to amend it.
Do you want to make the motion with the amendment?
Yes. I'll make the amendment that the optional holiday be for Juneteenth. I think that was left out of the original.
Oh, okay. I see what you're saying, the explanation of that. So at this point, are you requesting that the motion be to approve first reading?
Approve first reading. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
You made the motion you wanted to say first.
And I'm wearing this mask because I had a little encounter with someone who had COVID. So I'm under a little watch. So maybe a little hard to speak through my mask. So we had the discussion. I was working with county staff, county manager. And since the federal government made Juneteenth a national and federal holiday last year, I just felt it was necessary to honor that holiday locally. I know we have several other holidays that we don't recognize, but I think this one deserves recognition. And originally came up to be in the form of a floating holiday, which employees can take anytime throughout the year that they like to take it. As well as Councilmember Winkler wanted to add Veterans Day to this. And so the question now is, are we going to close the county down and make this a closed holiday for employees? Or we're going to make it two floating holidays? So I think that's kind of the discussion where we're at now, to try to hash out where we're going to go with.
I was going to say, if we could, I'd like to offer an amendment to the motion to make Veterans Day and Juneteenth, since they're official national holidays, I would like to make the motion that we close those days and actually recognize those days. And for a number of reasons, young lady spoke earlier and said that, you know, that we need the floating holiday and not just make it another day off. Well, in my opinion, a floating holiday is just another day off. Because we're pretty sure, we think maybe, that one of our floating holidays we have right now was instituted for Veterans Day. But we don't really know if it was or not. So we don't know if we're honoring Veterans Day when we take it off or not. So if we want to honor these days, I think we need to honor them and close for those days and make them an actual closed holiday. So I'd like both of them to be closed holidays.
I would say that I disagree with having a closed holiday because I think that, I don't believe we should ever shut down if we don't have to. But I think people prefer, I know all of my employees would prefer to have any day because then they can take a day where maybe they're celebrating that in some other way. So I just think the option, to me, the option, but I would defer to the county manager just to say, what, I mean, what do you think the county employees would prefer?
Well, obviously, we haven't polled any of them, but I think the flexibility, I think just from a standpoint of what they would prefer in their scheduling would probably be the flexibility of a day. However, I have not had any discussions with them. They may choose to honor veterans by being off that day or honor the holiday of Juneteenth by being off that day. So it's difficult for me to say what each individual might prefer.
Do we have another counsel for?
No, I was just going to say, I agree with Councilman Winkler. If we're going to celebrate the day, I think it should be on the day. I don't believe it should be floating. Yeah. I mean, the purpose of the holiday is not just another day off. It's to recognize the day. So I think it should be closed.
Yeah, I just, I would like to also make that mention too because again, I think it does get lost when you're not actually celebrating on the day of what it is.
I agree. I think the point of it is to recognize veterans and to recognize the, to recognize the Juneteenth holiday, not necessarily, you know, just make county employees happy. It's to recognize the importance of those days. And a floating holiday fails to recognize the importance of those individual dates.
Well, if Councilman Winkler is making that in the form of a motion, I'll second.
Okay.
Were you the second?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have now got an amendment for first reading, at least by title only, to designate these holidays as actual designated holidays, both Veterans Day and Juneteenth. All in favor of the motion, Sal?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Typically, a motion like that and an issue like that is referred to committee for review with management. I think FNO can take a look at that and make sure before it comes back for the second and third that you've looked at all of the ins and outs of that. Public hearing, oh, sorry, finish that. We are now concluded with new business. Committee and other reports, Health and Environmental Protection Committee meeting, Chairman Tom Aldette.
So we had our meeting last week. Present was Councilwoman Love and Councilman Winkler. We had a follow-up meeting with the Rec Committee. In that time, the Rec Committee did go out, look at different proposals, what they could possibly agree on. There's probably six or seven different proposals they looked at. They did not come back with the unanimous vote, but I felt like they were fairly close to possibly getting one. More work is going to continue to happen with that. But as part of our meeting, we did take a vote and we voted to move forward with our second reading of the, what we had started in regards to the June 18th meeting coming up, July 18th meeting, excuse me. Yeah. So it would be a recommendation to move forward with second reading on July 18th as part of the, what was voted on.
Thank you, Mr. Aldette. Finance and Operations Committee Chairman, Robert Winkler.
Thank you. Finance and Operations met this evening at 5:15. Present were myself, Councilwoman Allison Love and Councilwoman Joel Hamilton. We considered applications for service from York County Forever and we made the recommendation for the appointment of Don Love to a first term for District 2 and reappointment of Donnie Mitchell to a second term for District 3. For you, keep York County beautiful, who were just in here. We made the recommendation for the consideration of appointment of Chrissy Stewart for a first term in District 3, Jonathan Nguyen for a first term in a vacant at large and Megan Hilton for a first term in a vacant at large. So she showed several vacancies on her slide earlier. We're trying to get some of those taken care of. So for Culture and Heritage Commission, recommendation for the reappointment of David Duncan for a second term in District 3 and Annie Huit for a first term in District 6. Then we moved into reviewing and discussing the allocation of council discretionary funds for different council members that were on there. And they were all approved. And I stated that one thing this has done is made me realize how many really good organizations we have in York County that, you know, we're finding and supporting through this. And I like what's going on with that. We had a recommendation from the internal auditor regarding the boards and commissions audit. We had asked a while back, there are boards that have not met for a long time and different commissions. I'd like to ask that all council members get copies of this report since we got it. It's in their packet. Okay. Y'all do have them. It's this big packet here. It was just given to us for information. We didn't vote on any of it because we wanted to take time to read through it and understand it. So all council members are getting it tonight. We will take it up again in a future Finance and Operations Committee meeting to, because if we disband or stop some of these, it's got to go through ordinance changes to do that and stuff. So we'll be taking that up in the future. We want all council to have time to look at it and digest all of it and give feedback before we started back through trying to adjust any of them. We had a discussion regarding a proposed resolution on term limits. That resolution, I don't know if it's in the packet or not. It was given out to us. It passed out of committee with one amendment or one adjustment to it. That resolution supports term limits, but it does not offer a number of years for the term limits. It just says that the committee by a two-one vote supports term limits in the resolution. And so that will be coming before council to vote on the full resolution, whether or not we support that. But the number of years is not in that resolution. And lastly, we got a finance update from our auditor and everything's looking good there. And our vacancies at the sheriff's office and the county level are coming down a little bit. So that's a good thing. We're starting to fill some of those spots. And that was it.
Thank you, Mr. Winkler. Councilmember, new non-agenda comments?
Yeah.
Mr. Aldette?
Yeah, I just want to piggyback. And I'm going to look back real quick on the committee meeting we did have. I did want to mention again, emphasize, the Rec Committee is continuing to work on a proposal, okay? To become unanimous. So they may again, hopefully, come back with something for us. But again, just want to make you aware of that. That exercise hasn't stopped on their end. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Aldette?
I'll just make a quick statement about the term limits. Look forward to that discussion. Obviously, I'm opposed to it. And one quick note, since we're hitting summer months, for people that's watching online, on TV, be sure and take care of your children. There's a lot going on out here and we need to be mindful of what our kids are getting into, who they're hanging out with, because a lot of things are just abruptly happening. I think as parents, we can avoid some of those things if we keep that extra eye, be that extra good neighbor to what's going on with our children.
Who else? I know that we've been talking about wanting to have a joint planning commission and ZBA meeting with council. I think the most appropriate time would be to do it at our workshop in September since that will have given us six months of time with RECODE, which was a huge effort last year. So if management could make sure to pass that information along so that when we have that, folks can be prepared to attend the September meeting. And that's always the second Tuesday of each month. I think that's right. And we can, we can talk about what the details are, but I think it's important to go ahead and get that on the books. In summer months are hard to do that. Citizen concerns, Sunny McRory to address counsel regarding the Encourage and Serve Club of America and the World.
She's not here.
She's not here. Okay. Do we have a motion for executive session?
Whether we go into executive session, I believe for only two. I don't know of any additional items. First matter is a contractual matter relating to a property acquisition for the coroner's office. Second item is the receipt of legal advice relating to a request to authorize condemnation regarding project number 11149-014, Track 97, South Carolina Route 72, road widening.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we will move into executive session in five minutes. Thank you.
Of the building currently under contract with the county from coroner operations to sheriff operations.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Our second motion is to authorize condemnation as we discuss an executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Move to adjourn.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.